Business letter from Howard Carly regarding the Heart's system. Where's, uh?
He couldn't make it.
Uh, you written it down?
Yes, sir, I'm Harold.
Come on up here. Cause I know that you have information about this.
He typed you up in a little letter in case he couldn't hear, he could hear, right?
Well, I missed what you said.
I said he typed up a nice little report in case you couldn't make it.
I did, I wasn't sure I was gonna make it. I can sort of summarize it. So to tell you what, I think the issues might be, I don't think it's as complicated as the last thing you talked about, but it is complicated. And one of the issues is that you've got two state agencies, you've got the DEP and you've got the DHHR that deal with wastewater. And sometimes they have the same regulations and sometimes they have different regulations. And it looks like they're together when it comes to beauty salons. There are a couple of issues with hearts, but I think the beauty salon is the issue that I'd like to see resolved by somebody. And there are two ways to have an approved beauty salon wastewater system. One is to take and put it in in-ground, but if you have an in-ground system, you have to have a double-sized drain field. And you have to have a pump and you have to dose it in, which means it goes in at different times. The problem with hearts is our drain field's not big enough to do it that way. So that option is pretty well out for dealing with the beauty salon. And the reason, the reason the state feels you have to have these different options is because of the chemicals that are the byproduct of getting your hair fogged. I don't do that, but there are people who do have their hair faked. So anyhow, the other option is that you segregate everything that comes out of the beauty salon and you put it in its own special tank. You pump the tank periodically. There are rules about how big the tank has to be. It's sized according to how many chairs you have in your beauty shop. You have to have a special permit in order to have this kind of a tank that you get from the state.
So it's different, they don't get a permit from our health department?
No, they do not. Our health department is not involved in the permitting of beauty salons. All handled by us. Our health department deals with any kind of in-ground system, but this is sort of its own kind of thing. At least as far as I can understand what the regs are saying. And I guess, it seems like only the second option is an option at heart. The question then, for me, the big question is if you do this second option where you put in this, you put in a special tank, you get a special permit and you pump it periodically. And you wouldn't know how often you'd have to pump it until it starts happening because you can't see how much is coming in. Who's gonna pay for that? Is the bill gonna come to the commission or is it gonna go to hearts? And is there enough money generated by the beauty salon to pay for any of these costs? I don't.
That was, that was one of the questions. And I, maybe Rick, do you have any idea as far as money generated or things like that?
I don't have any clue about money generated. I know what the rent is that she's paying. It's $250 a month. And I think that pumping fee is gonna be around, what, $260 a month or $260 a pumping?
That's what it had been when we were dealing with what was there prior to us doing it. I don't, you know, I don't feel like my role in the project is to say you should do A or B or C. I had encouraged the hearts board to look at it and come up with their recommendation. And I'm not sure that's happened yet.
Yeah, I think it's the letter.
But I guess, I wasn't sure whether the, the letter was from the whole board or the letter was from the cost or whether he was thinking in the letter that you could put the stuff in the separate tank and then pump it into the drain field. That's the way I read the letter.
Well, he, he called me after the last meeting when I was supposed to send him the letter for your all's request and he just asked what, what the request was. So I told him what the commission had wanted in the letter. And he said, well, I'll send you a letter from the board. So I was assuming it's, well, maybe it's not, I, I don't.
These places are saying every three to six months, see if that would be possible too.
I'm not sure how you.
I don't know, maybe, maybe every three to six, but it might be every week, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, you look at the number of patrons this person would have and they, they, you know, it's gonna take X number of gallons per patron and you'll have some idea from that.
Right.
I mean, you know, I figure pretty close to what your usage would be with that, so. And I'm sure they haven't done that yet probably, so. But I mean, you know, I don't know how, how much water it takes to whatever they do, but I'm sure there's some kind of, you know, it's been worked out before.
Oh yeah, there is, there is a state formula.
Well, Rick, do you know how many chairs are up, like, how many chairs?
Well, I was, I was just getting ready to comment. There's about four chairs, however, there's four chairs, but there's only two sinks.
Oh, see, we didn't know.
And it's gonna have to be off of, you know, like, like Doc was saying, the number of customers times, you know, an average water and chemical usage as it flow into that system. To come up with a, with a number. But I think she, right now, and this is just my guess from being down there a couple of times, is she's using one sink. And she's the only one working in there. And she's trying to get a barber in there also, but you know, the barber probably wouldn't be dying anybody's hair, I wouldn't think. Especially not mine.
And that overlay on this is the fact that there isn't, because we're holding the beauty salon thing, that's sort of there in the open, not salon. We don't have a system for the Hearts Community Center that's a working system.
When does the center, when does your board meet up there?
It's supposed to meet the second Tuesday of every month.
So, okay.
We haven't had any, uh, this month, then we didn't have one last month, to be honest.
Kind of need to get them together for this one, try to get something, you know, some kind of a general. Cause here's my thoughts is whatever you guys wanna do up there, we can do it, but I think you all have to be responsible for the charges in the future as far as maintenance of that.
I agree.
So the decision has to be made with that in mind, I think. And do you all agree with that or no? I mean.
Well, I mean, you're gonna have, your charge is 180, 100, 200, you gotta get a note of expense, you gotta have some kind of surcharge.
That's probably right for you. You get those, kind of get an idea of how much you see we keep looking at so we can have a cost. Okay. We know you guys would have to be paying. Then we know and you guys know whether it's something that we want to go that route or not, you know? And, but we need to get that done fairly quickly, so.
Put us on the agenda for the next meeting and then we'll try to get some numbers for you and correct.
Sounds good. And I think then, cause, cause we wanna do what you guys wanna do.
Right.
But we need you guys to let us know what you wanna do, cause like Rick says, we need to get this thing done, you know?
Yes, we do.
And.
So really, what I'm hearing is really, seeing me like it, you've got two different systems. We're gonna have an empty, a tank for the salon. And so what you need, seeing me like it, is somebody needs to decide, are we gonna go ahead and put a system in for the gym and everything?
Well, that system's sort of there. That's pretty much ready to go. How to finish that system is gonna depend on what is the beauty salon there. Whether the old tank that used to serve the kitchen can be used for the beauty salon or if it becomes part of the rest of the street system.
I think that's what the tank is gonna be in, the beauty salon.
If it's big enough. If the, if the, there is a current tank that's not being used for the newly installed system. It's the old tank that took care of the kitchen.
So I mean, see, we're making it too complicated. You've got a beauty salon, it needs to be empty.
Right.
Solve that problem and that's it. The rest of it's a sale.
Well, the state is saying that the size of the tank depends on the number of chairs.
Well.
So hopefully.
And how often you have to hit. And that, I mean, that's something, it seems like.
Yeah, that's, that's the perpetual cost associated with it, so.
Right.
We have to kind of get an idea about that and whether you guys can sort that or whatever.
I think they presuppose if you have X chairs, you've gotta build in that you're gonna have, have this many gallons, they're gonna have to get this on. I think that's the way they do it, rather than saying, well, we've got X chairs.
Seeing me like it, well, Mr. Mason, the board out there has gotta make a decision. Do they want to have a salon that, that they may not want to actually be on? And if they do, I think, and.
Yeah. Yeah, so if, if they could, Rick. Say that, doesn't it please?
Well, seeing me like it, that's what the decision has to be made, not this commission, is that board?
I, I can speak from personal experience on the beauty salon. I know the one we have at Mid-Kin, Diddy P come in and rode us up and we had to put in a collection tank. And we collect every drop of water that comes out of the beauty salon. And they come by annually and check our receipts where we've had that tank pumped.
Well, let me ask you something. How many chairs is in the one you're talking about?
One.
One? How do you have to have your system pumped?
About every three months.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was saying too, so. And if it was that case, well, what does it cost you to have a pump beauty?
I think it's like $250. It's, it's not that bad because of there's really no solids in it, you know, it's just pretty much water.
But thanks though, that helps a lot, so.
You guys just tell me what to do when you guys figure it out.
Alright, we're on the new business. Gentlemen, you all seen the new business? I have one suggestion. I just saw this, the hiring of Sarah Browning. I've been, I spoke with Ken, I think he has, they have some vacations that they have to get out of the way. I'd like to tell you that till after the first of the year. And then that way, she's working in the sheriff's office right now. And then that way it allows them to work out their vacations and shit. Alright?
Vacation schedule.
I would like to table it till after the first of the year for that, just for that.
I think they need to, Darrell, did you need the help with that?
Well, I mean, I understand that you may need the help, but I wouldn't wanna put Ken in a situation. And I don't think you would either.
Well, I had some vacation scheduled too.
Well, I, I understand. I mean, I understand, but you know, we haven't had anyone in that position for a while. And we can hire it after the first of the year, and I think everything will be fine. That's what I moved that we table it right in the first of the year. Do I have to say that?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Alright, two to one vote, motion. See the other old, uh, new business? Do we have a motion to approve the, uh, the other new business?
Same.
I second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. With that being unanimous vote, the motion's good. Alright. Now we're at commission concerns of communications. Commissioner McCann.
Well, I think I'll go back to, I'll talk a little bit about it earlier. This county, as I said, operates on the backs of people who volunteer. You look around and talk a little bit about what the fire department people do, and that is a yeoman's job, no doubt. All the training you go through and when you have to get out, do the hours and whatever. And it has to be people who have big hearts, but also pretty sharp minds and willing to work and care about their county. And we have so many people in this county that do that. We have the fire people and we also have these coaches that go out and drive through the seating and look at the lights on the ball field we talked about earlier. And that just doesn't happen. Somebody has to get out there and work and it's not one of those things you pay people for. So I just think that if we can do anything to help people who volunteer, we should always do that as a commission. One of the things that I've always encouraged and supported and other commissioners have too, is to do what we can to encourage youth to be involved in our county in sports or other events, band, ROTC. And again, they need help. And this commission has always been good to step up and give them a little bit of money to encourage that. We had a program here once where we just taught people how to write grants to help them bring money in. But at the same time, that was getting them involved. And I think, you know, we've got parks and rec people, just when you look, start looking around, there's just so many people that just step up and make it happen for their community, just like the water board. For the headache, you know, get paid a little something, but not for the headache and, and responsibility that they take. But again, they care about their community, care about service. So it's just, it's important that we never forget that without people doing what's good for the community they live in. If we ever let that slide by, we don't have a community worth living in. It's those people who step up and carry the ball that makes these things happen. I just don't think, sometimes we realize how important it is to tell somebody they've done a good job. It doesn't have to be a big deal, but people need to be recognized that they have stepped up and done a good job and just something good that helps the county. So I, I just feel like we just need to keep that in mind as we get ready to start a new year and keep people involved and do whatever we can to help to keep what's out there doing the jobs, whatever it is they like. I know they're enjoying it and they may have some goal, you know, particularly coaches, they may have kids involved, things, they want to make sure they have a good opportunity. And that's fine, I said, you know, you picked up the paper last week, there's all kinds of people were hired to be coaches. It's a legal requirement. They're not making any money, they're doing it because they want their school, their community, their child to have opportunities. I just think it's, we're fortunate in this county, as I said, so. County has had a lot to offer in the way of monies and things, but we're a county that I think care about our people. And I just see that this volunteer's spirit is alive and we can keep it alive. So anything we can do as a commission, as a county, whatever, we just need to do that. Bring somebody, you know that they've done a good job, let them know that they've done a good job. Just a few kind words is all, all people need sometimes, is to let people, am I doing what needs to be done for the county? So I appreciate you, everybody that does this job.
Well, along that same line, several years ago, I was in Florida with my family. But the guy in the fire department was up at my farm putting out fire. You know, those, it happens to all of us. And like I said before, you know, until you need it, we don't really think about it. But you guys know more than anyone that these are things that, it's not optional. These are things that we have to have. It's just like being able to drink safe water, we have to have safe water. But we also have to have people, have people out of cars and road and not red. You know, we gotta have people that, to transport people that are hurt and get them to the hospital in time that they can survive their injuries or the illnesses and, and. And this is something that I know we're, it kind of sounds like we're beating a dead horse, but this, this horse is, is alive and we need people alive. You know, we, we need, we need these people out doing the jobs they do. And we all owe it to them, to help them continue to do the job that they do and, and put them in situations where they can afford to do the job that they do. You know, there's, there's, we can sit here and thank you guys all, all we want, but what it comes down to is, is we know we make some difference. And every citizen in Lincoln County knows that too. Everybody's going through hard times. Everybody's just running about one thing or the other, but it doesn't matter, and it doesn't matter, you know, what political parties in power. You're still gonna be there putting out fires in houses. You're still gonna be rescuing people, you're still gonna be transporting people. I mean, there's, this is stuff that has to happen every day, just like we get up and go to work and come back home. We do this every day because that's our job. You guys do your job protecting us while we do ours, so. You know, anything that I'm sure that this commission can do to help, make sure that we have those services available to people that's counted with it. And, you know, there's, there's just, there's just no way to say thank you enough for the things that you guys do and, and I'm, you know, I don't know. My house got burned down, but I had a lot of barns around there that could've burned down too and things, so it was a big plus. And I lived in a very inaccessible place and shit and, you know, and things. And I mean, you know, if they were there as quick as they could get there. And, and that's something that if they weren't there, you know, I would've lost everything out of that view, so. But I appreciate the job that they've done and I can assure you that we'll do everything we can to help you out because they're great.
Alright. Well, let's start off with a real positive note. Alan Holter's here. He's been keeping us updated on our cell phone towers. I don't know if you all have been up to the 911 center. They're actively working on, you know, renting the structure for the cell phone towers there, 400-foot structure. And he's been sending me pictures, you know, almost daily of what's going on. That's a major plus for our area. And I think in the next week, we're gonna probably go to the Yachty site and work on the lightway. See what we can do with the lightway to, to get up to that site so that we can go in and start the construction with that cell phone tower. That was what, $567,000?
That's correct. And I'd hope to have that, Lisa, we look ready for you tonight, but we found the typographical error that's gonna be corrected by the attorney and that's being done. And we should have an email copy of it by tomorrow, close the business. The other thing that the attorney found was that HG Energy, all that property is not in their name. Some of it is in the name of East Resources. Although we think they are the same company now, it's gonna require two contracts because we're gonna have to have it across the east property to the HG property and then the one for Mr. Outlaw, so. There's some additional documents to be prepared for that.
Well, I think that's just a part of the biz, that's what we have to do. I appreciate you.
I'll pass some pictures if you've got, I don't know if Mr. McCann passed them down the table or, or gave them to Mary or, or those pictures I handed you there at the beginning of the meeting?
I think they're still there.
On the other side, right here.
That shows kind of a chronological sequence of what's going on up there, up until this afternoon, actually.
Look at that, see that? It's a big engine. Alright, there you go. I really, I appreciate what you're doing and, and that's, getting those cell phone towers are, are gonna be big, huge. First?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I could go, you know, in retrospect with what we discussed in that, what are the chance of asking this body to take everybody out of the loop with the accountant and the attorney? And ask the state auditor, because they certainly have all the resources with infrastructure and all that. They can pull the data that I have and put A, B, C, and it takes, certainly helps move things forward so we can get our project moving.
What, you know, what I would think, and I, I don't have a problem with that, but I would like to ask if the PSD could address that. And if they think it's a concern on theirs, they could send a letter to the saying, could you all ask the PSC to look into these things? Do you all think that would be more appropriate?
I think public service districts should take that up and, and then, you know, if there's, and you know, if they decide, I'm sure that them acting as a body would be just the same as us acting as a body.
My, my view is terrific and socialist, there's no better. If they look at what are they saying would be gospel, as I just said.
But we could, I see, I actually put it on the December 18th agenda to discuss. We'll discuss the issue of putting some to the state auditor and then.
Well, cause I think the, you know, I think it's that, the PSD board's prerogative as far as how they wanna address it because they can decide on whether they need to look into it internally more before they would address the, address the commission as far as approaching the PSC or not. Or if they think that, you know, it's, it would be whatever, then, but I, I really would like the, the new, the new board to decide on what they would like to bring before some, and then us back on appropriately being.
Alright. Next, regarding water projects, since you mentioned that. We have, the county commission, I think the guy from region two just left. We've committed $100,000 to the Big Hearts. I spoke with him before the meeting and he said that that was, you know, of course, ahead of, ahead of schedule. So we'll be looking at next year probably having to pay that out. The $50,000 from Francis Creek, I spoke with Zach Browning and he said that that would probably, they will be asking for that money around April, April, May of next year. Of course, the, the 157,000 for lower mud, for lower mud river project's already been sent out, that was requested. And we still have $200,000 that we committed for the alcohol woodbill project. And I think that they will be asking for that probably in the next six months, from what I understand. Now, speaking with, with Zach, he told me that with the amount of funding that they have for the alcohol woodbill project, he said that they may not even need the $200,000 from the commission. Now that was a month ago. I don't know where we're at now, but, you know, just to kind of give you all a heads up of what's going on there.
You might wanna go back and look too. I was thinking on the real, real alcohol, we actually put some money up front in that first 200,000 in order to get to our, Andrew here moving and whatever, so. They might wanna go back and look a couple of years back if we spent any money.
Do you think we did?
Yeah, so it seems to me like there was some monies that we was feeling.
They wanted up front so we could go ahead and get the inventory done.
Cause you can't get the other monies without that money being available, if I'm not mistaken.
Because that's one of the things, cause he said, yeah, he was talking about the funding scenario and he said that there was $200,000. You know, $100,000 for Bolger and $100,000 for alcohol.
We put 200,000.
And then, basically, but he left me with the impression that we hadn't paid anything. And since you said that we have, then we can go back and.
When was that roughly, when?
Probably 30 years ago.
3 years ago?
Yeah, cause I think that's the same situation. In these projects, they, the initial part that you find as far as architecture and design really doesn't come from sponsored water, right? And we kind of take care of, we need to get this water.
I mean, that's.
And I think that's.
I would think that he would have that, you know?
Probably close to.
Yeah. But anyway, that's good news. Alright, and next thing. Rick helped you all look. Family Dollar going in a branch. I don't know if you all familiar with this, anybody from that area? A Family Dollar at 4942 McFlowen Highway, Branch, West Virginia. Hey, that's a big deal for the area. Also a Dollar General, down at Yachty, alright, right past the state road rush. So two, two discount businesses going in. That's pretty, it's pretty nice. I think we'd be well received in both areas. And next, to reiterate what, you know, Mr. McCann said and Doc Vance. The volunteer work, not just with the fire departments and what you all do, and I really appreciate you all working and getting those documents to us so that we can take care of some of that stuff. Kind of felt under, kind of felt under the gun in the last five days trying to get everything squared away, but I really appreciate what you all have done. But another thing, it's, it's serving on boards. You know, we need people to serve on the boards that, you know, like the dilapidated buildings of that board. We have the planning committee with Tom, Tom just passed away. And, you know, we have, and it's on our website, we have advertised for that and we are advertising right now. But we need people for District Two and I believe District Three on our planning committee, and we need people for the dilapidated buildings. And as we move forward, we're looking at all the different boards that we have and trying to make sure that they are meeting, that they have people who are willing to serve. Not just being on a board, but really going after it and trying to do something for the community. And that's the man. I mean, just being a part of the board, you know, you could be a part of the board, but if you're not doing anything, you know, you're not really helping your community. So whenever, whenever you see these things out, if you know people that are, who are, really wanna get charged up and really wanna try to do something, please ask them to serve. I know it's a lot of times a thankless job, but you know, you really help out your community and you really help out this county. That's all I have. Gentlemen, I move that we adjourn till December 18th at 10:00 a.m. Gentlemen, I move that we adjourn till December 18th at 10:00 a.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? You wanna adjourn?